Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this special call meeting of the Danville City Commission. Today being Tuesday, December the 17th. The hour is 3:03, 3:02. And welcome. Do you hear a motion that we move into executive session?
I will move that we move to executive session regarding a personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61-810-1F.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Any discussion?
Are you going to announce the... Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call for vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Understanding?
No, I understand.
But you didn't vote.
Well, I never vote to go into executive session. You know that.
When you don't vote, acting abstention.
Okay.
Which goes with the majority.
Are we voting?
Yes, ma'am.
How do you like the vote, ma'am?
What's the motion?
Putting you in charge.
You're putting me in charge?
You want me to repeat that? Commissioner Cottle?
I will.
Sorry.
Motion was to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61-810-1F. Seconded by Commissioner Sears.
Okay.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. I would like to say to those of you who are kind enough to come and attend, for your benefit, if you've got something to do for like the next hour, probably be of very use of your time than sitting here. This will probably be a good hour, maybe longer. For one, this four R. We're in executive session.
I move that we return to regular session.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We are in regular session.
Okay, I have a resolution to read. Resolution 1217 to 1901. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville herein after the city previously retained the professional services of Attorney Barbara Chris on November the 14th, 2019, to investigate the grievances and complaints of city employees Joyce Collins and Erica Engel, as well as additional grievances filed by Erica Engel on November the 21st, 2019, and whereas the purpose of the investigation was to determine whether there exists within the city a discriminatory work environment based on gender or race, and whether any staff have subjected to retaliation for reporting gender or racial discrimination, and whereas Barbara Chris was given full access to city staff and conducted extensive interviews of 13 individuals, reviewed a host of critical documents, and prepared written findings pertaining to same, and whereas the report concludes there is insufficient evidence to establish that any city employee has been subjected to discrimination on the basis of sex or race, or that Erica Engel has been subjected to retaliation for reporting gender or racial discrimination, and whereas the report further concludes that the mayor's comments regarding Joyce Collins, Erica Engel, and Jennifer Kirchner, when reviewed in isolation, are not sufficiently severe and are pervasive to create a sexually or racially hostile work environment, and whereas the Board of Commissioners was fully briefed on the investigation, reviewed the findings, and now desires to accept the written report of Barbara Chris dated December the 13th, 2019, in order to resolve the aforementioned grievances and complaints, and whereas the written report found the city's personnel policies and procedures are proper and sufficient to establish the city as a workplace free of discrimination of any kind, but there are some conflicts amongst employees that exist, and whereas it is important for the city to focus on creating an atmosphere where all employees feel valued and are afforded an opportunity to not only use their knowledge and skills for the benefit of the city, but to bring forth in good faith complaints and unfair treatment, which will create a more harmonious workplace. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville as follows. Number one, the written investigative report of Barbara Chris dated December the 13th, 2019, is accepted along with the findings therein, including that the city does not have a racially or sexually hostile workplace. The grievance of Joyce Collins has been resolved. The complaints of Erica Engel regarding her job classification and compensation need to be addressed by the new city manager and new human resources director by interviewing her as well as Earl Coffey, in conjunction with the pending compensation study, in order to confirm her classification and compensation. In fairness and courtesy to the employees that filed grievances, and those that were the subject of said grievances, the report will be provided to each of them today, and will be made available to the public as of 2:00 PM Thursday at the city clerk's office at City Hall, the 17th day of December, 2019.
Is that your motion, sir?
Yes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second. We are in discussion.
I think it's important to note that part of what Commissioner Hatkins read is that there's still problems to be resolved, and we look forward to getting an HR director in place, and the new city manager also in place to resolve those. But at this point, we're going with the report.
Any other comments? Seeing none.
Well, I think it's important that I make a comment, and that is that this has gone on for quite a while, and us accepting this report says that we still value the... we value all of our employees, and we still value all the effort and all the hard work they do on behalf of the city, and that we look forward to moving forward and providing the best employment opportunities, as well as the best employment benefits that we can as a city, as always try to do.
Any further comments? Seeing none, chair will call a question. All in favor of the motion accepting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item four is the Parks and Recreation Joint Participation Agreement Discussion. Mr. Dexter?
There's been quite a bit of movement on the issue of Parks and Recreation, which may be an understatement. However, it may be appropriate... Wait one second. If I can hand out these documents so those others in attendance may don't have to sit through our further discussion. The fiscal court met Monday morning to review the document that we revised pre-addressing concerns that they had raised, and they were appreciative of the fact that the city, in fact, made those. At that meeting in which they had a healthy debate on many points, there came away certain revisions that requested, and we have actually made those as they were not... did not substantially change the rights of either party, but were, I would say, sincere attempts at providing clarity. And those documents, those changes were made and provided to you. Upon the court's meeting today, there were a few other concerns that were raised that were not raised on Monday, and I would say most of them, again, are ones that we can agree to without much or any conversation. One requires a little bit more conversation, but I feel confident that it can gain your approval with some clarification. So with that being said, there's a document in front of you, and I'm just going to point to the main sections here. You have a clean copy and one that shows the revisions. The one that shows the revisions, you can see there are several strikes. It changes tenses and things of that nature, none of which are important. The large ones start on page three. The term of the agreement, again, the court requests a five-year agreement instead of a 10-year agreement. I think that is acceptable in a good timeframe, so as to allow the document a chance... or the new department a chance to be successful, and it allows it to be reviewed in the third year. It also decreases the county's contribution from 325, which included some cost of living adjustments, down to 322. Again, that's not substantial, but they felt is more reflective of what their contributions were or should be. And then if you'll flip over on section eight, on page five, the... some of this is semantics we had in there, that there will be an increased fee tier instead of a second fee tier, established for non-Boyle County residents for facility use, and that's going to be at a minimum rate of 125 percent. The word "minimum" was added. And then the court requested that there be a separate paragraph about the additional fee structures that may pertain to future special products. Again, it's the same language. It just stands out, so as to provide additional clarity. And the equipment section there, there was additional language there that just says that all Parks and Recreation equipment shall be used solely in accordance with the needs of the department. Again, clarification, not substantial. And the county, in fact, does not have an asset depreciation statement for that equipment, so that's why the line above it is struck. That's something that can be developed by city staff in conjunction with finance. And the largest changes, it's just a... I think it is the changes that are embodied in section 10 are what the desires are of the two parties, but the language needed to correlate to the spirit of the document as best as possible. And so we've somewhat wrestled over the language, but through... the court wanted some additional considerations in its meeting this morning, and through further conversations with John Bell and a late telephone conference with Magistrates Cullen and Gay, we have both clarified their intention to be what I thought it was, reviewed this potential language for which it is acceptable to them. Obviously, they're not speaking for the court as a whole, but they themselves had some concerns expressed at the meeting this morning, so the attempt was to address those concerns in a way that answered their questions, frankly. And so the language presented to you is as follows. City will hire and supervise all staff who will be employees of this city and subject to the rules and regulations of the city under the management of the city manager. The Parks and Recreation Department will be fully managed by the city. All of that's unchanged. The changes come in the next sentence. The Director of Parks and Recreation shall be appointed by the city. The county judge executive or his or her designee shall serve as a voting member of the hiring committee so as to have proper input. I'm sorry, that one does not contain the revised language. Let me flip to this copy. The Director of Parks and Recreation shall be appointed by the city. The county judge executive or his or her designee shall serve as a voting member of the hiring committee so as to provide proper input. In the event of a tie vote to determine the hiring committee recommendation to the city, the Parks and Recreation Committee Chair shall cast a vote. Additional full-time staffing decisions shall be made in adherence to the normal hiring process of the city, which is led by the Director of Human Resources in concert with the city manager. That doesn't contain it either. Ashley, are you sure this is the right copy? Okay. Well, then let me do my best to reiterate it on my iPad, if you'll give me one second. I probably attached the wrong doc... We are now on version three-point-something, so it's quite possible that I just attached the wrong one. If you'll give me one second, excuse me. That's okay. I'll do it. Okay. The Director of Parks and Recreation shall be appointed by the city after recommendation. The county judge executive or his or her designee shall serve as a voting member on the hiring committee, with the fiscal court providing its desires for particular characteristics and experiences as a body to the judge executive to represent said preferences to the city and the hiring committee so as to have proper input. Again, there was a desire on behalf of the court to have some further input into the hiring process. The intention was not to micromanage the process, but rather to have an adequate say in the type of director they felt would be best for the community. And they wanted to do so in a manner that was more than just a representation from the judge executive on the hiring committee. So what this step does is it allows the court, in the event of a vacancy in that position, to establish, say, we would like to see a director who possesses these following qualities, characteristics, or experience. That is mostly to give to the judge to utilize in participation in the hiring process. Okay? So their desire was, again, to have a little bit more input, and I think that language does that, and it doesn't circumvent any of the rules we have about hiring and the processes that we have to adhere to. And the last change in language is this. Prior to the city acting on the recommendation for hire, said recommendation will be forwarded to the fiscal court, which shall have 10 days therefrom to provide a letter of support. Now, that does not mean the hiring is contingent necessarily upon that presentation. However, what they would like to see is, again, say, we would like a candidate possesses characteristics A, B, C, D, and E that is represented through the judge executive on a hiring committee, and then when a recommendation is formally made, prior to the city commission accepting the city manager's recommendation, it allows it to be forwarded to the court, who can then affirmatively provide a letter of support for the recommendation. Again, it doesn't give them a veto, but it gives them another opportunity to confirm a candidate to have a successful partnership, since it is a critical department head in relation to both the city and the county. Now, that language, again, was drafted after listing to the concerns of Magistrates Gay and Cullen from their meeting this morning. We drafted it in concert this afternoon, and I find it acceptable, from a legal standpoint, for your consideration after airing those concerns. The last changes that I wanted to meet... review with you is simply that they wanted to say that we're going to have no less than quarterly meetings. That was the intention of the language drafted before, but that will simply now be in there. And in the default section, we had a line that says, "A default by the court results in a termination fee being immediately due and payable in amount equal to the remainder of the payments that are due." The court's requested a similar default language in the case the city defaults, what happens. So we simply mirrored that language, and that's a fair request, that a default by the city results in a termination fee being amount equal to the remainder of the quarterly payments due. So it would relieve them from that duty. And last, under dispute resolution, they requested that if we are not able to amicably resolve our disputes, then we will agree to participate in a mediation arbitration process of those disputes. Again, very reasonable. So with that being said, I would say we are largely there. In the event you find this document ready for approval, I would ask that you vote on it, and at least Magistrates and Gay have indicated that upon your successful approval, they will request the court to hold a special call meeting to approve it at its earliest convenience. They approved the document today contingent upon certain changes, but the language that was drafted in that section 10 on the hiring of the director needed some further modification, which is what I presented to you, and they are in agreement with, but it will require them, again, to have it approved one more time.
I would move that we accept this Parks and Recreation Joint Participation Agreement as amended.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. We have a first and a second by Commissioner Cottle. We are in discussion.
I can simply say I was at the meeting this morning, and there was a real strong spirit of cooperation, and I think we're coming together here. This is where the buck stops.
That was the case yesterday, too.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Good work, Counselor.
Thank you. I'm not going to be willing to take all that on my shoulders, though. There were a lot of people who put in a lot of time to ensure the success of an agreement. And I also just want to afford this, and we've said this a couple other times on a couple other issues, but this is the way government works. It's not always pretty. It's not always easy. It's rarely easy. However, politics, at its very core, is a conglomeration of various interests expressed in various ways, from people who all feel passionately that they have the betterment of society at heart. So that while that passionate conversation sometimes leads us down different roads, I think what is exemplified in not only this negotiation but others is that there are a lot of people who have the best interest of citizens of Danville, Boyle County in mind to create a department to deliver an essential service that people expect and frankly require in some instances, and we're doing that. Again, it's not a pretty process sometimes, but when done cooperatively and professionally, it can be achieved. And this is yet one more example where this community can come together and do something big, and change a department to a format that can set us up for decades of success.
And as I have said, and to echo you, the citizens are better served when both governments work together. Any further comments? Seeing none, chair will call for the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item number nine is... I'm sorry, item number five.
I just want to watch John breathe for a minute. His heart started beating again. That's good.
Item five is the amendment to ordinance number 1939, which is the creation of City Parks and Rec Committee and the Office of Parks and Recreation Director. Do I hear a motion up or down for the amendment? I'm sorry, ordinance... Amendment to the ordinance. Thank you.
We're doing 39 first.
That's correct.
Move for approval will just be the first reading of...
Of amended ordinance 1939.
Of amended ordinance 1939.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Terry. We are in discussion.
Again, for clarification, there is one change in this ordinance, and that is to change the effective date of its implementation from January 1, 2020, to July 1, 2020, which would be in concert with the Joint Participation Agreement, which you just passed.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hatkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Item six is ordinance number 1938, and this would be the repeal of the joint city-county Parks and Recreation ordinance as it presently exists. Do you hear a motion for that ordinance?
I will move for approval of ordinance number 1938.
We have a motion by Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Cottle. We are in discussion.
Use a little explanation on that, too.
Sure. This allows us to clear our books of the previous ordinance, and the prior ordinance that you passed first reading of replaces this one essentially with the new framework that we've established. So it is... it's a housecleaning item.
With that said, is that... does that have to do with a review of the books?
The codification books you're talking about?
No, of the financial books of present Parks and Rec.
No. No, it had nothing to do with that one, so...
It's just because we can't have two ordinances on the books.
That's right. Essentially, your prior ordinance replaces this one, so as a housecleaning item, we would request that you appeal the other ordinance, so our book isn't... our codification book isn't messy.
Is John Bell out there smelling again?
He breathing.
He still breathing?
He breathing.
More and more votes.
Oh, he said one more vote.
What's it worth to you, John? What's it worth to you? Supper tonight, John?
Let's talk cash. Let's talk cash.
He probably just wants sleep. Don't even bypass the food. Just go to bed.
We definitely need to buy him dinner.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I believe Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Item seven is...
Can I just ask a question real quick? We have another meeting on Thursday. Do we need to have a second reading for these on that day?
I would ask that you would.
Okay.
Good idea.
Should that take place prior to big court?
I think it's fine. I think it's fine to... Yeah.
We don't want to jump the gun.
Sure. I don't... I think this is procedural. I mean, I don't...
I just don't...
Yeah.
You find out before then. Let us know.
Let's do this. Let's have it on the agenda. If it becomes apparent that that is an issue for any group of magistrates, then we will let you know and table it. Okay? Okay?
And I'm assuming since Magistrate Cullen has been here several times, and we appreciate you being here, I'm assuming you'll carry this sailing right through.
Right, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item seven is a discussion on whether we still need to have a meeting on December 23rd.
I will make a motion that we cancel that meeting.
I will second it for discussion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Terry, seconded by Commissioner Cottle. We are in discussion. What's left for us to do?
That would be the question, I guess, is there any agenda items?
Well, if we take care of business on Thursday, no matter how long it takes, and if Jason comes through, we should...
He's already said he's coming through.
Well, he's said a lot of things.
Their meeting will not have taken place by now. That is the reason I called. Their meeting will not have taken place by now. I'm certain of that. That is the only reason I asked for that.
But we don't necessarily have to wait for their...
No, you've already approved the participation agreement, and so this would simply be a housecleaning item that prevents you from having to meet again prior to the end of the year to allow the ordinances to lapse and go into effect.
And if we need a special meeting between the 23rd and the 31st, or the first meeting in January, we can always call a special call meeting with proper notification.
Absolutely.
I was just wanting to keep it on the books because I knew you were not going to be here.
I said I might not be here. You might be here by yourself.
More than likely, I will.
Therefore, we will not have quorum, so you can't have a meeting.
The other thing is, the court is indicating, I mean, they are in such agreement with the entire document that we were wordsmithing literally one last sentence.
That's right.
So I just, I don't think it's...
It's at 10.
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM on Thursday. That'd be great.
That'd be awesome.
Hey, there you go.
You did the hoof at 9 o'clock.
I think that's all John Bell wants for Christmas.
I believe we have a motion and a second. Any further comments, quips, anything like that? Seeing none, chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. End of our agenda for today.
I move for adjournment.
Before we do that, I'd just like to just thank staff for the work that they've been doing to push us to get all this stuff done. We've got a lot of stuff accomplished in the last two weeks, and very thankful for it.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.